To still, I guess, encourage them to still clean line levels so as to avoid that work. So we're not paying additional money or paying an additional person specifically to do that here as part of this project.
Yeah, I mean, if you already said this on the board, but this is really about exceeding that forty hour workload.
Right.
Okay, so depending on the scheduling of construction, you know, there's, we're always at the, you know, it's not within our control when projects happen, they happen right on top of one another and our inspector has to be out here in plenty of overtime to just address what's going on at both sides, then that's what this contract is for. If the timing doesn't work out at all and we're talking about construction after the work at the North Coast Treatment Plant is completed, then this contract kicks in. But this contract is really, while we have our inspector out here at the treatment plant for full-time inspection, this only kicks in when he has to put in overtime to take care of all of the workload.
Do we have to ask questions?
No, you can go ahead and ask a question.
I got two questions, and the first one is, I believe every contract that we have with Lampirson, the observation is in that contract. So why would we want to pay for it twice?
Well, I, it's my understanding, the Second Street Water Line or whatever reason, and I-
Because that's MoDOT's project, project.
Okay.
Isn't that true?
Uh, that is true.
We're part of it, but MoDOT's controlling it.
But part of that extension, though, is our part, is-
Yeah, the water and wastewater section of the MoDOT project is ours. That's what we pay for.
Okay, well, again, I think ever, I could be wrong, but I believe every contract that we have with Lampirson overseeing the projects is part of that contract. So again, why, just because the guy that did the wastewater plant that we're paying forty hours a week for, which is in that contract, why would we want to pay him additional money? Because they're going to save some money by using him to do oversee the other project.
But we don't pay any money unless he works over forty hours.
Okay, so who controls it? That's their discretion to do what they want to?
The project controls that.
The project controls that?
Right, that's what Andy's saying, is if-
What does that mean?
Is, is if they're happening at the same time, you can't-
Well, they're gonna happen at the same time.
You can't do two places at once.
But he's full-time at the old wastewater plant.
Right.
So aren't we gonna have something at the same time?
There'd be, there wouldn't be any additional cost, that's what this is, this is no additional cost.
I'm confused. I don't understand.
So, the point is, is that while the construction is going on at the North Coast Treatment Plant, full-time inspection, he can peel off for half an hour, nothing's going on, they're between loads of concrete, whatever. If he can peel off for half an hour, he can go take a look at something over on the other project, that's great, that's how, that's how with one person in town, you're gonna take care of multiple projects going on at the same time.
So you're, so you're telling me then, that the other projects, you don't have oversight on those projects unless we pay him overtime in order to do them? Is that what you're telling me? Because in the contract, you have oversight of the projects, of the Johnson Drive, of this one here, in your contract, you say you're doing the oversight for that project. Is that true? That's the way I read it. So if you're, it's in that contract to do those projects, and you want to use, utilize that guy, and he does go over his forty hours, I think that we're paying for it twice, that's my opinion.
Well, I don't know, maybe you can, I don't think we have any, we don't have full-time inspection on anything but-
I didn't say full-time inspection. The only time we have full-time is out here at the wastewater plant. Is that true? I mean, there's so many hours through so many days, and if it goes over that, then we're paying certain, certain hours, that's the way I remember it being done, right? So he's full-time at the plant. The only, the only way I see it is if he can, if he can pull away and do that for Lampirson on one of those other projects, then you're making out on the deal. But I think that the city's paying double if we gotta pay an overtime charge for this, that's the way I-
Well, I can't speak to that without reviewing the, without reviewing the contracts myself.
I'm saying, I'm just saying my opinion.
Over in current, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was looking at the section one, more of all than authorize the mayor to sign and abbreviate a degree of marking. Now, I think the abbreviated term would be while these projects are running correctly, in other words, wastewater treatment plant, Second Street project, and the Johnson Drive project, if that would be your understanding of that?
I do so, yeah.
And also, in mind of all of the rights that I think are key phrases in here, is it in an effort to save money? I don't, I don't want to see us paying for it, we have to either, so I appreciate some room change.
Okay. Well, any other, any other questions?
I just need more ver, more clarification from you, because it just seems like you've been-
What, okay, so that, what, so we need to know what the, what the contracts for the other projects specifically state as far as construction observation that's arguing the contract, or that-
That's the way I read the others, but that's the way I read the one that we tabled.
And how, and how this is going, yeah, and how this is going to tie, how this is going to tie into that?
Mr. Mayor, I have to review this all, so I don't know what it is, but I agree with all of the right, the, the only reason that we would have a second contract would be to pay more money. It would be no point in having a second contract to say they're not going to do any more work for any more pay. If there's a second contract, it would only make sense that that's including additional money. So, I mean, we're not looking at that, at, if the contract says we're not paying any more, why are we, why would we have a second contract? So I, and I have no pleasure to review this or not, so I, I'm not talking about it, it's not in our, I would definitely review it.
All right, well, before we go, are there any other specific questions about, about Because we, what we can do is, we don't have a motion yet or anything like that, so this, I'm pretty certain there is no time continuance on, or time issues, which is, it doesn't matter. But what we can do is, if you guys would like to postpone this decision as well until we get more views, clarification, find out what the contracts on the current projects state, and how this, this particular contract would tie into it, that way you have a chance to look at it, the attorneys have a chance to look at it, review it, we can do that, if you guys would like to. And I'm probably, probably a couple of weeks before we, before we get that done, so we can just postpone this indefinitely, if you guys would like to, and then we can leave it up to-
Administrator Harvey.
To, to let us know when we're able to put that back on the agenda. So if somebody wants to make a motion, postpone that, we can. If, if that's what you guys want to do, which I agree with, I think that's based on all of the rights comments and, and the attorney's comments. And then also to give you a chance to kind of look, get up to speed on, on some of this stuff here, so.
So I believe that we table this until we get more clarification from our attorneys and what I discussed.
Okay, we can do that second. All right, we have a motion, a second to postpone, a resolution two thousand fifteen dash two with nine pending further clarification, attorney review. Any other comments on that about the motion postponed? All right, seen that all of the, motion carries sixty-two. All right, so we will bring that back to later dates. All right, next is the presentation from ESCI, the Department of Emergency Medical Services. Mr. Green?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and teach it. You're gonna need PowerPoint and everything, okay?
Sorry, I got a search.
If you guys want to take a five-minute recess, stand up and stretch your legs real quick, or use the restroom, it's gonna be a quick five minutes. All right, I don't know if that was full five minutes or not, but it looks like we're ready to go, so everybody can make their way back. Mr. Wilson, I'll let you, where did he go? Okay, we'll begin, we'll begin from that here.
Yeah, it's an extra hot dog thing.
They just sat there and talked, and then whenever I started, they were just like, oh. All right. The floor is all yours, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Gordon Alderman. I always enjoy going last on the agenda because I get to talk longer. Mrs. McCoy told me I only had an hour and a half to do my presentation. Why? Now, I, I will be very brief, I know it's been a, a long day for a lot of folks, as it has for me. But what this is, is basically an overview of the study that we did analyzing the feasibility for the provision of emergency medical services for the city of Odessa in the future. And not just the city of Odessa, but the entire ambulance service area that we will talk about. Again, this is a brief overview, unless you would like to go through the report page by page. Any takers on that? Oh, good, okay. Well, we'll just jump right in, though, feel free to stop me and ask questions along the way, and of course, at the end, we will have a time for that as well. A lot of this information at the beginning will be things that you probably already know. The Odessa EMS, the ambulance services, service that provides transport ambulance to the city of Odessa, Lake Lafayette, Mayview, as well as part of the Mayview Fire Protection District, and the Odessa Fire Rescue Protection District encompasses about a hundred and twenty square miles with a total county population of nine thousand six hundred three out of Oakwood Station. Now, your ambulance is co-located with the Odessa Fire Rescue Protection District, that's where they run out of, it's a very large area for a single ambulance to run from, but we'll talk about how they're able to cover the area through the response area shortly. Just over, as a brief overview, we looked at governance, lines of authority, Odessa EMS, the function of city government, the employees within the organization are considered city employees, we looked at organizational structure, and as with many organizations of this type, it's, it's a very narrow chain of command with the EMS manager, person that oversees the day-to-day operations, assisted by the full-time staff and as well as some part-time staff that do other administrative functions. We look at funding fees and taxation because that's always on everyone's mind when it comes to public services, how to figure out to do more with less and reduce the tax burden on the public. As you can see from the chart here, this is the actual budget for the organization as well as the fourteen, fifteen budget, which is still in process. Not a whole lot of change there, a little bit of fluctuation, but just a slight increase over the last five years. And then if you look at the collections and what that does, as the, the users of the system pay their bills, or some that don't pay their bills, there is a resulting tax burden that the city is required to, to make up, which is really the, the idea of this particular study, is figuring out how to pay for EMS services in the future. As you can see from the budget, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this, this fiscal year. Of that, they collected roughly five hundred thousand or so is what was, was budgeted for this year, that leaves a result at two hundred thousand seven sixty as a tax burden. So we would apply that back to the general fund from the city. We also looked at a SWOT analysis, tried to determine what are the critical issues that are facing the organization today, what are the critical issues, the future challenges that the organization will face in the future. Of course, revenue shortfalls are always an issue. EMS is not intended to be a moneymaker, it's not a profitable endeavor. There are private EMS systems all across the country, but I would, I would be heartless to name one that is not subsidized by the communities that they serve through tax dollars. With the Affordable Care Act, there's a lot of uncertainty in the future about how that will impact EMS revenues moving forward. A report just recently came out where the expectation of the Affordable Care Act was to reduce emergency room visits because everyone had insurance and they could go see their doctors, they're actually seeing the reverse. Emergency room visits have, have increased because people want to get that care quickly. So they have insurance now, they go to the ER more frequently. Having looked at the run totals for this EMS this year, this project was completed at the end of fourteen, so we didn't have fifteen's data yet, so I would wonder what the call volumes are this year in comparison to last year.
Well, from the beginning of January through five months, it's just over four hundred calls. So we look at that our projections are, we're going to be above what we had this last year.
Right, and, and that's really what's happening across the country, service demand is increasing. Now that more people have insurance, they're more likely to, to seek out healthcare services. When we did the study, there was no formal capital replacement plan, EMS has a lot of vehicles and high-dollar equipment, cardiac monitors, stretchers, other technological equipment that has to be replaced, it does get worn out. I came from the EMS fire background, and the joke was, if you want to find out if something is indestructible, go into a firefighter repair medic, because they can bring just about anything. And so, the equipment does wear out through normal wear and tear, there are technological advancements that have to be understood as well, so there needs to be a firm capital replacement plan so that whatever organizational structure the agency is under, they're able to plan for those high-dollar expenditures. And then there's an inability to tax the entire service area. As you saw on the map earlier, the city of Odessa makes up a very small portion of the overall response area of Odessa EMS. That hundred and twenty square miles of largely unincorporated Lafayette County does not pay taxes in the city of Odessa. So that two hundred thousand dollar tax burden you saw is not distributed across all the users of the system, that's only here in the city, and that is a primary area of concern for the organization. From a personnel management perspective, we looked at policies, rules, regulations, compensation, how the organization compares with others, we looked at some application and recruitment, testing, management, promotional processes, we're not going to get into that much here tonight, there's some information in the, the actual documents, feel free to read over that if you haven't read over it, so as of tonight, I would recommend that you do that, it's great nighttime reading when you're having trouble going to sleep. There's a lot of technical information you've got to take care of your insomnia pretty quickly. From a staffing perspective, the, the agency is a mix of full-time and part-time staff, ENTs and EMT paramedics, not uncommon for a system this size, just wanted to sugar this as a reference to show that there are various types of employees within the system. The service demand is what we're really interested in showing because that's really how we tell how busy a system is. Like I said, this project concluded, the analysis concluded at the end of two thousand and fourteen, prior to the end of the year, so what you see on this is a projection of workload twenty fourteen. I think we're pretty, pretty close on, on that total number, just above eight hundred calls. So we, we did okay on the projection based on the historical service demand. If you look at a service demand and where it's occurring in the service area, as expected, most of the service demand is right here in the city of Odessa. However, there are a lot of calls in the unincorporated areas. Now, those people who are using the service are paying for the service, but through the user fees, but that's for actually using the service. Having the service available is what the taxpayers are having to fund, and the unincorporated areas are not paying into that currently. If we look at service demand by hour of day, if you imagine the twenty-four-hour clock laid out flat with the left-hand side being midnight, you'll see the service demand is really low during the overnight hours, starts to pick up during the six to seven a.m. time period, peaking in the afternoon, and then tailing off into the evening. Typical pattern of a, of an EMS system because EMS is driven by human activity. So most people don't have car accidents while they're asleep in the middle of the night if they are driving, and so that's when they have a car accident. From a distribution perspective, or how well service demand can be covered, this area shows, the green area shows how far an ambulance can travel from their current location within eight minutes. Within eight minutes of travel, they're able to hit about ninety-three percent of the overall service demand. Really good coverage from a, from a single location, so as from a capital perspective and a facility perspective, the ambulance is right where it should be in regards to being able to respond to the service demand throughout the area. From a reliability perspective, that means how often are more than one incidents occurring simultaneously? Like in most agencies, eighty-six percent or so are occurring one at a time. However, our circumstances, about twelve percent where a second ambulance call is coming in. And now, when that occurs, either Odessa EMS has to bring in additional personnel or use mutual aid responses into the response area to cover this. If mutual aid is, is used, then Odessa is losing that potential revenue because the other system that comes in and picks up that patient will bill the patient instead of Odessa. But what we see from this, again, most incidents are occurring simultan, uh, singularly, and the, we did not have the data on, on what other services were coming in, how often they were coming in, but I would encourage group and, and to work with the city in getting that data and making sure that you know exactly what revenue is being lost because of simultaneous From a response performance perspective, that, that's really where most of the general public wants to know how well the service is performing, how quickly am I going to get an ambulance if I have an emergency? We start looking at this from a call processing standpoint first. When someone dials nine-one-one, how long does it take that truck communicator or dispatcher to get resources, get the information to the resources so they can respond? National standards, sixty seconds to ninety percentile. And as you can see here, they're hitting that mark dead-on. So your, your ability to dispatch resources is occurring very rapidly. Turnout is that time between when the dispatcher, truck communicator pushes the button, talks to the radio, and sends the resources, and when the unit is actually in route. So between dispatch and wheels rolling to the incident. National standard for a medical call on the fire side, for fire-based emergency system, it would be sixty seconds. Unfortunately for us in the EMS community, there's no published standard or benchmark as to what the turnout time performance should be for a strictly EMS third service provider. As you can see here, three to four minutes over the last couple of years is the typical turnout time. What this does not take into consideration, however, are those simultaneous incidents. If the second incident is responded to by an Odessa EMS unit, then that will be recorded as a turnout time. If those, if those personnel have to come in from an, from an outside location, calling from home, or wherever they may be, that will extend the turnout time. Total response performance, again, for the EMS industry, there is no published standard nationally. However, I can tell you that, that most rural EMS systems will shoot for a twelve-minute total response time at the ninety percentile, especially ones where there are ambulances located in the urban areas and they have a large rural area to cover. And as you can see here, Odessa EMS is hitting that twelve-minute mark right on it at ninety Big question was, how do we, how do we deal with EMS in the future? What do we do with it? How do we pay for it? Well, there's basically four options, and status quo is always an option. Whether or not it's feasible is the question, and here it is, but some things would have to change if the city chose to retain control of OMS and, and keep it within the city's umbrella of governance. The charges for service right now that, that Odessa EMS has in place are a little above what the Medicare allowable charge is, but that's okay, there's nothing wrong with that because there are a lot of private paid individuals, private insurance companies will pay higher amounts for ambulance bills than would Medicare Medicaid. So that's fine, but I would just encourage the city and, and the agency to make sure that they're keeping tabs on, on what those charges are and how they're being paid by the various providers. Also, they're doing their billing in-house right now, and doing a really good job of collecting it, but if you're paying an outside provider to do that service for you, they have an incentive to collect more revenue because their, their commission is based on how much revenue they collect. So you have to balance out what it would cost to pay a professional firm to do those collections for you versus what you're paying in, in staff time to actually do the billing and collections in-house. Also, an active program of deliquid accounts. Right now, from a net perspective, we're looking at about forty-nine percent collection rate, which means fifty-one percent of the billables are not coming back in. Those are a lot of outstanding, a lot of old outstanding debts, and as I understand it, there is no active aggressive means to go after those old debts and collect from the users of the system, which is the biggest part of the revenues that are coming back in. There are a number of ways to do that, a number of ways to go after bad debt, whether it's through a collection service or through liens. In my state, North Carolina, they have a debt set-off program with the state treasurer, so a lien is attached to the individual's tax return, their state tax return, and they're able to collect ambulance revenue that way. A number of different ways that you can do it, but again, the city should actually investigate that and what it would cost and what the benefits would be. There is also the downside of that, where you're actually going after bad debt from taxpaying citizens. There could be some, some negative publicity in regards to that as well. Formation of an independent ambulance district, much like Odessa Fire Rescue Protection, statutes will allow the creation of an EMS district that would do basically the same thing, the organization would be very similar, but they would provide EMS services instead of fire protection services. The advantages of this type of system is it establishes a sustainable funding mechanism for the system, much like, again, the fire district has done. It removes the burden of, of funding the system from the city, so it frees up those funds to use in other projects and other departments, and it applies the cost of, of operations of that district equally across all of the citizens that are, have access to the system. Whereas now, just the citizens of, of the, the city of Odessa are paying the tax burden, whereas under- the tax burden, whereas under this, it would spread it out to the, all the unincorporated areas and every property that was protected by the district. Disadvantages, of course, the city would lose control of providing that-